Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, May 6, 2014, Plenary Board Meeting. I like to call the meeting to order with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call this evening, Mike Caprileo, Chairman.
Tom Young, Vice Chair.
Bob Curtis.
Russell Blanchett, Member, Present.
Kevin Borke.
Close enough. On this end this evening are Joel Kappelson and Mike Crotto and also Alternate Jason Garrett. Any public input this evening? Hearing and seeing none, first item on the agenda is the Moose Hollow Drive update. And this was just, I think, an update on what's going on with the road. I have a couple people on various sports teams that live on Moose Hollow and they're just asking what the timeline went for. And I assume that's why you're here this evening to...
Bring up the dates since we weren't part of the fund from the last time.
Just to bring you up to date, last year, we tried to get the road done, the builder backed out completely. What's gonna happen? The cul-de-sac is going.
Yep.
Drainage, we brought our town engineer, he's got the checklist of what needs to be done and everything else. And we were told that it's gonna be done this summer. So what we're gonna do is pursue that with him, wanna start getting on, reminding him that that's what he said, that's what we expect and we wanna get him going. You've been asked questions for what I've been told, what to do, what's gonna happen out there. The cul-de-sac is going for the towns' point, it's the best thing to do, the way the drainage is set, this set up.
Okay.
The first part of Moose Hollow coming down to that point has been done, all done. From that point on, the drainage had changed when they put in that road compared to the original plans. That's been now revised and corrected, and when they get the drainage, it'll all be corrected all the way through, the cul-de-sacs will go away. Pre- previously, the board approximately seven or eight years ago, and the builder worked on, maybe the abutters in the bank were gonna leave the cul-de-sac, their work out something ago, that did not go through with either of the abutters, and those guys are not even there anymore, they came and gone.
Yep.
Okay? So, we just wanna get the road done. Townwise, it makes more sense not to put a circle in the middle of a straight line.
And the original plans that were done when the road was put in, punched in originally was to have the cul-de-sac removed?
Correct.
So, anyone who bought homes on that road?
Yep.
Had the understanding the cul-de-sac would not be there?
Correct.
The house that was just built?
Yep.
Right on the circle?
They were very aware of that.
That they're gonna gain, front yard and their driveway has to be extended to meet the new road, they're aware?
Correct. They're aware of that. When they bought that house, they made it clear, 'cause then on that same lot, the drainage that was put there wrongfully, it was supposed to go in the other guy's lot who's just moved, okay, and that house was supposed to go beside his house, they moved it towards the other guy's house.
Okay.
And it wasn't even on, it was easements were all wrong, we got that corrected before that house was closed on, so it's 100% right. They're all been, the town's not gonna get caught in a crossfire.
And we saw the maintenance bond on the road?
We have a, not a maintenance bond, we have a road bond on that road.
Okay.
Correct. Once the road is done, then we got a one-year maintenance bond that we deal with at that point. This road's been, literal, as you all know, the policy on the roads, just bringing up an old wound, we never used to let them pave the road until the last lot was built on. It's not good poli- policy, it's not a good way of doing things, 'cause this is what happens, roads take a long time, people are paying and taxes and stuff, and school buses don't go down, the augments keep on coming.
Over one lot?
Over one lot, and it serves no purpose.
That won't lower their price, so it's not gonna, I'll be selling it sometime soon.
And I put on more construction equipment, putting additions on and pools than I would for that one lot.
Okay. So, once the cul-de-sac is out and the road's drained out, then he'll put the top coat on the road?
Finish it up.
Okay. And then the maintenance bond will go into effect?
What I'm asking from the board is that, we'd like to fire off a letter to him for the blessings of the board at this meeting, to ask him to stop pursuing the finishing of the route as agreed to. We'll fire it off, we'll send a co- co- copy to you as saying that.
Okay.
Joan and I were gonna put this together, we'll get Lou involved, 'cause he was part of that, the CC him as well. Jack is very well aware of it too, the highway, talked to him already.
I think everyone wants to get it done, and they're aware that, is the end of the summer when he's gonna start it or finish it?
House.
Complete by the end of summer?
Just as a point, end of the summer's kind of a nebulous term unless you're going by the astronomical end of summer, which is another issue.
We should put a date on it.
Yeah, we wanna give him a timeline.
But there was a firm date that he stated in the letter that he sent to the board, one year ago, give or take, whatever it was.
That's what we're looking up.
It was the end of August, I thought.
Six months ago.
Yep.
There's a firm date in there, and you should hold him to that date, I would think.
I concur.
And that was the completion date in the letter, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, guys?
Good. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome to come back and see me.
Okay.
You gotta talk about impact fees?
Yeah.
Kill the commercial one. Pressure on fast food, you're killing it, guys.
Next item on the agenda is Impact Fee Reworked Ordinance Work Session, so to go through the next stage that we worked on last time. So I see that, Jen, you put up a lot of updated documents?
A lot of documents. Yeah. I actually wanna start with a really easy one, the outline.
Okay.
I do not intend for us to look at all of these documents, I wanna start with the outline so that we can talk about the bigger picture, questions that we have at this point, and then go from there. There's multiple versions depending on the approach we're going, so hence the handy one-page outline. To give you...
Where was that?
Using my really big electronic...
It says here, review outline and proposed reorganization. At the very top.
Yeah, it's a one call outline.
Yes. Item one, review the outline and propose...
Okay, because if I click it, it says, "Sorry, we're unable to find the document at the original source. Verify the document exists, still exists."
It's down below, if you look at...
It's right above the Word doc, it's the third one from the bottom.
Yes. Exactly.
One from the bottom, okay.
Yep.
I had the same problem.
I got to work and went to plug in my iPad to charge it and realized I forgot it. So, this is my electronic version tonight, it's gonna be great for my eyesight.
Keep your toes.
Fortunately, I always do paper copies.
You can put it on Jumbotron, if that'll help.
Lots of print. Okay, so, what we have here is, on the left, you've got the way the ordinance is currently structured, the order everything's been in since the beginning, and then, in going through that process and making the last round of edits, started noticing that there were areas where, because of the degree of editing that had been done, the flow wasn't really working from section to section, and thought that perhaps be a good point to say, "Hold on, let's look at whether we should reorganize how the ordinance is laid out." So you've got on the left the existing, and you've got on the right what I've proposed as a reorganized layout of the ordinance, and what you have at the bottom is what Mr. Mayberry had suggested. I know at the beginning, the last two meetings when we reviewed this, the general feeling that I got from you was that you didn't wanna necessarily just do a wholesale reorganize as Mr. Mayberry had suggested, you wanted to still preserve what you had and some of what, you know, some of the language, and just rework it. So I think the proposed reorganized outline is somewhere in between. What I did is I kept all of the basic information upfront, the authority, the intent, purpose, applicability, and definitions, and then again, it continues to go into the process of imposition of impact fees. It though pulls forward some of the later sections such as the credits and the waivers, and puts it all together in essentially a linear fashion that an applicant could read through and go, "Okay, this applies to me, this is how they're gonna compute what my fee is, and this is when I need to pay my fees, this, you know, here's some alternatives I can, I can offer up to the town instead of cash, here's my, here's the waivers provision", and then appeals. So the whole process that it comes down to, the applicant paying their fees, is all together. Then, I use a title that Mr. Mayberry had suggested, authority retained, or this is something that Lebanon used, and it just pulls in those additional assessments, the offsite assessments and the premature scatter development, same language you had before, just kinda grouped together into a new heading, essentially. Then, everything that has to do with the methodology then follows, of how the impact fee methodology is established and the fees are set, and then lastly, administration of the fees, the maintaining, the records and the accounts, what they can be used for, refund of fees, and then your severability and effective date. So essentially, decision number one was, which direction would you prefer to go? Keep the existing or go with the proposed reorganized?
I like the flow of the proposed reorganized. It makes sense to structure it this way, so you have these contiguous blocks of similar material.
Yeah, and it really is just a little bit of a reshuffling, too.
Right.
And I think by reshuffling, I think, what I noticed, it started answering some of the questions that people would have. So, for example, when Jason reviewed it and when Mr. Mayberry reviewed the ordinance, you know, they'd read a section, they'd have a question, but that question was actually answered further down in a later section, and I think this'll help to try and pull some of those pieces together to eliminate those, the questions, and kinda resolve some of it just by reshuffling.
Yeah. I think we found the same thing over going through them too, as you mentioned.
Yes, we did.
So, this would flow better, I would be fine with a reorganized outline.
Agreed.
Okay. So that was decision number one.
Okay.
Decision number two, still looking at the outline, 'cause again, I think this was one that was more of a larger conceptual. If you look partway down, I've got the one row that I've shown as struck through, so that's the cost escalator factor. That was one of the things where we, just, it was at the end of the meeting last week and we said, eh, we'll deal with that, you know, after we talked to Mr. Mayberry about what can go in the methodology. I wanted to confirm or not whether you wanted to keep language specific to the cost escalator factor in the ordinance or pull it and send it to the methodology document. And part of this is, so what happens is, and the way I drafted the reorganized piece is using that hypothetical of pulling the cost escalator and adding language to that section that precedes it on the review and update of the method, of the impact fee schedules that talks about adjusting, using new data to reflect current costs and demands.
Which is where it fits best.
It kept it general, and then it allows you to deal with the specifics of how you're going to adjust in the methodology.
In the method itself, so that we define the method and how the method will grow over time in the same place.
Yeah, that's what...
Which makes much more sense to me than how we had it structured.
Okay. Okay. All right, so the next question, again, before we move forward, bigger conceptual question, was, we've got two different approaches that you can take revisions to the voters. You can take it as a series of amendments, where you will show the strike-throughs and insertions, or you can take it to the voters as a repeal the existing and replace with new. You can do a repeal and replace even with some of the language being retained from the existing, the benefit is, it's easier to read. There's a point, there's a tipping point when you're making amendments, where you have to say, "Are we making so many amendments that the marked-up version is no longer readable?" And part of what is happening here with these is just simply that shifting of things around, that alone is causing there to be even more markups, so...
It's gotta be more yellow than we did in the other...
Yeah, but not that, it'd be more confusing, because they'd be looking at something and trying to find it, and it's two pages ahead.
So, having been doing this for two years now at the State House, I'll give you two pieces of advice. Number one, Jen's absolutely right, that if you get it too complex, you just can't follow it.
Yep.
On the other hand, if you set up two separate documents, people are gonna sit there and curse, because you don't know what's changed between the two of them.
Mm-hmm.
So somehow, you've gotta be able to show, if you wanna have people follow you, what you've done, at least some maybe third document that says, "Here's what we started with, and this is where, how we got to this document here." Because it, it, there's nothing more frustrating, and I had to do that today as a matter of fact, sit there and go through the documents, say, "Okay, this moved here," and you spend all your time trying to figure it out, and miss the concept of what you're trying to accomplish.
So you repeal or replace, but you have a cheat sheet that outlines what was changed from the original document?
That's one way, yeah.
And then you give a clean version that goes for the voters, so that it's easier to replace.
So, what Jen's saying is you repeal everything and you replace it with a new document is really what it is.
But you give an outline as to what was changed to the voter in the insert or...
Because they wanna know what's going on.
Right.
That would be one, one thing, repeal and replace, it's not repeal the old and then a separate ballot to replace it with this, correct? Because I'm sure that...
It'd be one...
...you could not replace it.
Yeah. It'd be one article, there'd be repeal and replace.
Just checking.
Yeah.
If not, are you...
Well, yeah, it'd be one, there'd be repeal and replace, and you'd be repealing 1,300 and 1,400 and replacing with a new 1,300, would be how it would be structured. And that's one of the reasons why when I did the reorganized outline, I kept the new number, and I put in the new number and I showed the old number, just so, you know, even just now, you could see how it was reorganized and what moved where. I mean, this is a more simplistic version of what Frank's talking about.
Yeah. It comes time to present this to the voters, having that available as a key to answer their questions with a handout to give them information.
And maybe put a third column in on the new and old with the 1,400.
Yeah, and you can also do a side-by-side comparison that shows existing and...
Put a summary table like this would really speed up the jumping through the document.
Yeah.
Otherwise, is each one a separate?
Right.
Warrant article? Or is it one warrant article with every single item that's adjusted from the old one as an amendment?
Should be one warrant article. And what you could do is, a kind of a summary handout that says, "All right, here's what changed." And what I would actually do is I'd take, you know, essentially this, and I would just expand each of these sections to say what changed.
Just sensitive.
Original, new, or something to that effect, that would make it easier to read comparison, but that's something I'd do at the end. So, okay.
Packaging the sausage.
Okay, there you go. So, I'm hearing repeal and replace?
With expanded information to justify what was changed.
Okay. With... Okay. All right, so, you know, think about, if you had read when you were a kid, those books that, you know, you'd read page one and it'd say, "Okay, you know, choose A or B. If you choose A, flip to page 10. If you choose B, flip to page 30." That's kinda how I structured the four different versions, so, the version you win is the clean reorganized version.
Are there pictures?
There's no picture, sorry. But just so you know, doing the clean versus doing the track changes is, it's all one process. It's, I...
So we're going to...
Did the changes and then accepted the changes, to give you the clean versus the...
We're going draft, impact fee, cleanup, cleaned up PDF?
You got the draft?
Impact fee, ZO, April 30th?
Yeah, see, it'll be, yeah, April 30th, reorganized, clean. Or looking at the version up above.
Fifth one down. Yep, fifth one down.
Yeah, looking at the bullets up above, I have links for reorganized draft, there's track changes and clean up above. I also posted for you the original language, just so you could see it. One of the things I mentioned to Joan that I did, is because we'd made so many different sets of changes, I actually went through and accepted all of the changes, and then used Word to compare the original to the revised, and had Word markup the changes, to make sure I hadn't lost any of the original language, because where we had changed something and then changed it back, I was afraid there were things that was still actually the original language that was showing as a change, so, they should be a little bit cleaner. But this version here is just totally clean draft, no track changes. Also, I mentioned to Joan, we were talking about this, I didn't wanna go through line by line, the last meeting we talked about, before we did another thorough review, sending it out to others for their comments, but there were a few areas here where we had yet to circle back on some of those alternatives that you had asked me to research, so wanted to take just a few minutes to circle back on those, go through what those options were, and then I can make them quickly and get this out the door to others for review.
Okay.
All right. So, with that, flip to page two. There is some concern with the definition of public capital facilities, particularly that the word "equipment" was a bit vague. So, hey, in the comment bubble, you'll see a couple different definitions that I've pulled from other communities, you've got Londonderry, Bedford, and Wilton there as examples.
I mean, these are from other towns, but isn't there someplace within our own town that CIP is defined?
Well, this, not necessarily, this isn't the definition of the CIP, but what a public capital facility is. I don't know that it's defined in the CIP.
Well, Londonderry brings in the CIP in the definition of the public capital facility, which doesn't that make sense? 'Cause didn't we last time talk about the CIP and tying everything back into it?
Yeah. Using my really large computer screen.
That hurts, it's sweet and to the point.
Yeah.
Well...
It's looking a little too small.
It's almost a little too vague.
If you're talking about capital facilities and you're seeing equipment, usually you want to find capital equipment as something that may have a cost value of greater than, say, $10,000, and I'm making up something that's greater than $10,000, and I expect a life of, say, greater than five years or something on that line.
Would this be the place to define equipment, or would the CIP be the cleaner way of...
Well, it's difficult for me to say, because I'm jumping into this, I, I'm assuming that somebody had a concern with what is equipment, so...
But it defines it later in the next sentence, though. "Used to life of no less than five years" or is defined in the CIP. So in terms of the cost and or life of the equipment, that's defined later, but what, I think we're talking about what is equipment? Kind of a...
So, reading from the current CIP, turn it sideways so I can actually read it. "For the purposes of this document, a capital improvement is defined by its cost and its useful life. Items included have a cost of at least $10,000 and generally have a useful life of at least three years. Eligible items include new buildings or additions, land purchases, some studies, substantial road improvements, and purchases of major vehicles or equipment. Operating expenditures for personnel and other general costs are not included. Expenditures for maintenance or repair are generally not included unless the cost or scope of a project is substantial enough to increase the capacity of a facility or an improvement is a major long-term repair that maintains a useful life of a capital facility."
So, what we have now for 130106, we do no less than five years, so that would have to be updated, but it says "or" is defined in the CIP, so it's defined in the CIP, but it goes against what it said to?
That may suggest that you wanna take and say, and remove that, or defined in the CIP, and leave it defined here. Because if you have it defined in the CIP, what can happen is, every time you do a new CIP, you're gonna get a new revision of what is a, you know, capital, public capital facility, so...
About having it here, you're saying, and not...
If you have it here, then you're assured that the planning board knows that it's changed.
Yep.
That it's not gonna be changed through the CIP process, and that it's gonna be able to go forward with some level of consistency year over year over year over year.
Okay. That would make sense.
My two cents were...
That's good advice. So can we pull in the financial dollar that we have into the definition of equipment?
Mm-hmm.
And do we keep it at five years versus three? Three's what we have currently in the CIP, from what you just read? That's what we have now, right?
Yeah.
Right, you have three in the CIP. So you want me to revise this to more closely match?
What's this in there?
What's in the existing CIP?
But how's it, how's it in here?
Here.
Yeah.
Yes?
To give us the consistency, knowing what to expect year over year?
Right.
Without having the CIP changing it and throwing off the...
Now, the question is, does the CIP committee intend to change what's here to be more nearly conforming to what's in the existing ordinance? I mean, they've gotten that far yet.
They would have no choice, except to follow what's in the ordinance at that point.
Once the ordinance is adopted?
Right.
Right.
There's a CIP committee standing up soon.
So that's a point of coordination between the two documents, to make sure whatever both propose is the same.
So should we take as defined in the CIP right out?
Right, because we're locking it down in the ordinance.
Okay.
Wanna keep five years or put it to three years? Done with the history of what we've done in town. Has it been three since the creation, or...
This was last done five years ago, so...
Three years.
It was 2009 to 2014.
I leave it at five.
Five, okay.
So we're keeping five.
Yeah.
Yep, removing "or is defined by the CIP"
Okay.
And expanding the equipment definition to include what was in the CIP.
All right.
In terms of dollar sign, we want a dollar amount in there too? Was it $10,000, was that what was in the CIP?
That's what's in the current CIP here.
Okay.
You can do that. What I would suggest, though, is I double-check, well, the impact fee portion would just be a portion of whatever that is, so I might wanna look back to the history of impact fee use, just to make sure we're not including. Yeah, let's do that and then...
You're looking to make sure we're not nullifying what we've done before, or...
Yeah.
Or contradicting?
Right, yeah, exactly. I just wanted to, just to kinda do a double-check that the scale or the magnitude of projects that have been done, that have utilized impact fees is consistent with that in the CIP and the threshold set in the CIP.
Okay.
It'd just be a quick, my guess is yes, you know, they match.
Just to make sure.
They do.
But... But...
Now, the CIP subgroup, whoever that is in town, will they be working this, this year as we're concurrently working on impact fees? And if so, when this passes by the voter, if it does, they're reliant on this, cause they need to follow what we, is passed here.
Right.
So, if anyone knows what their schedule is, or what they're doing?
Haven't heard. I did touch base with Jason about it, um, unless I knew they hadn't started yet.
Can we just give him a heads up, maybe, that, well, he probably knows this is all being adjusted anyway?
Yeah, he knows, and he'll get this next revision, yeah.
The filed draft review, okay. Okay. Alright, what's your next?
The, the only other thing you may want to consider in there is, in the case of a school, for example, if a new school was to be built, and I'm not saying there is one planned or considered or whatever, I don't know, but if there is a school built or a building built, you, you may want to consider whether, um, that outfit of the building, for example, if there's an addition, let's say, put on Town Hall, just for an example, and they're gonna have to put in, uh, new furniture, new desks, um, drapes,
fancy.
Shades, whatever, should that come out of, um, impact fees? To do the initial outfit of the facility. And I think it may be covered, if you look at land, at the very last of this, is land acquisitions and other reasonable costs associated, but it doesn't specifically spell that out to any extent.
Reasonable costs could include the initial fit up.
When the Town Hall is built, was that included?
I don't know.
Cause that was impact fees.
I wasn't even born then.
No, this Town Hall. But I was at, I assume that was impact fee based, correct? For the Town Hall, and it would have to be?
I don't know, that was done in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand?
It's before two thousand.
So the impact fees were in fact then?
Yeah, but they were the old impact fees. I don't know what was done at that point.
I don't know.
I'm just making a...
I don't know if that's a necessary, maybe, a question, has ever been a challenge on what is considered reasonable cost when you outfit a building?
It's nineteen ninety-two for mi- uh, municipal office, so. But, okay.
Maybe just ask him if that should be defined.
You know, it may prevent future problems if we do try to hang something on this here. Just so we don't have, uh, you know, a, a new, a, a new town maintenance shed being built and outfitted with a fleet of Cadillacs, because that's what's needed to fill the, the stalls in that building.
But that wouldn't be reasonable then?
Well, reasonable is a pretty flexible term.
You also can't define everything in that, or it would be?
Right.
An enormous paragraph. I would, if you could ask, uh, whoever the, um, when the Town Hall was built, I moved in in ninety-seven, it was built, I think it was ninety-nine, it was like a year or two after I moved in, was it impact fee based, and did it include the, um, what were the reasonable costs, the, the furniture, the, you know, putting the building together?
I can, I can tell you that when Campbell was built, and even for a couple of years thereafter, they were buying books and things like that to outfit classroom furniture and stuff like that through impact fees.
They were, okay.
But to me, a desk and chair, if you have a new building, desk and chairs is pretty reasonable.
There's a new school building, desk, chairs, computers, textbooks, how far do we wanna let it go?
iPads. Crayons.
Is really what we're trying to structure here is how we're spending impact fees, which is being collected for offsetting the cost of future growth. By the time that future growth arrives and needs those facilities, will those textbooks be useful? Will those Cadillacs still run? Where do you draw the line on the initial fit up?
It's okay, you projected school age population, it's supposed to change. Okay. All set on that definition?
Yep.
That's just a general note, um. We have the two paragraphs here that had all of the dates that said, starting on, you know, whatever date, um, these fees will be in effect, um...
What page are you on?
Bottom of two, top of three. Um, I had double checked with Jason to say, do we really need to keep all the dates, and he said, please keep them for now. So, I, I mean, we can do more looking and see if there's a legal reason to keep them. At this point...
Did he give a reason why he wanted them, besides please? No?
Not really.
I was more just curious, like, why you would?
They originally were put in because we were managing two impact fee systems at the time, because this development was going. Any developments that were approved under the old impact fees were subject to that.
Right.
Developments under the new ones.
Yep.
Had basically a whole new section, so when we originally set this up, we kept both sections, so that people would know.
But now we have one.
Right.
Right, and my understanding was anything in the old impact fee system, which is from ninety-one up until two thousand, was, it's a done deal, said it's all spent or returned, or?
Yeah.
Spent or returned, or it's no longer valid, or whatever.
Exactly, and so on the new system, you're now, you're still maintaining essentially that new system, um...
It gets confusing to have it in there, because if the system's new and it's one system to do it all, why do you need to refer back to something antiquated, old and gone?
That old, yeah.
I agree, um...
Maybe just ask him, instead of please keep it, you know, is there a reason?
Okay.
Is it philosophical, or is it legal?
Alright, um, just as a quick note, anything that's yellow has been worked on since you reviewed it in, in response to, um, the edits that you requested, but most of them are pretty straightforward, um. So we didn't need to really go through them at this point until you get like another round of comments back from folks, um. Any of the green, those are just placeholders for myself, my apologies, but I did not, so those section numbers no longer work in some instances. Um, and it's, when it's all done and the dust is settled, I'll go back through and correct all the references to what section, um, and hopefully I can piece it all back together. Um, okay, moving forward to page five. This is, um, just going through the waiver section, um, and looking, uh, again at the Lebanon example, there was just, they had one clause in there, when the board may grant a waiver, that I just wanted to propose and see what you thought. Um, this is, this is simply, you know, in, in an instance where, um, there may be an undue hardship, the board could, um, waive the impact fee, um, so I, it's the example that I had, um, for this, it's not an impact fee example, but it is a similar kind of situation. Um, the folks who operate the adaptive, um, ski school up at Mount Senapee lease their building and land from the state of New Hampshire, um, from the state park. And so as part of that process, when the ski, that adaptive ski school wanted to renovate their building, they had to then go and talk to, um, Dread, who owns the land, and say, can we do this? There is a process that, um, an applicant has to go through to lease or purchase state land. There's a fee associated with, with doing so, um, and then there was also the lease cost as well. What Dread wanted to offer to them and say, listen, we can't help you with the costs to renovate your structure, you're on your own, but what we can do is we can request to waive the fee, um, that is statutorily required as an administrative fee for going through that process, and so because they saw that one, that, that added cost was just yet another burden on the school, and the school was offering a benefit to the state and the state park, um, and so submitted that waiver request, and it was approved by the Council on Resources of Development and the Long Range Planning and da-da-da-da-da Committee over at, uh, Legislature. So, that's just an example of, of kind of a, a situation where someone might be able to come in and say, listen, we don't have, you know, it's undue hardship to, to actually do the, to pay the fees, gives you an opportunity to waive it in such, in such a situation, um. The other, the flip side is, is are you opening a can of worms that you don't wanna open?
Where every plan comes with a waiver request.
But in, now, with the first paragraph in yellow, not the sidebar comment? Is that, cause right now we are, is that the way it's booked currently?
Oh goodness.
Where it says, "Planning Board May Grant Full or Partial Waivers With Impact Fees and Assess Property."
No, that new paragraph, that's kind of an intro.
To paragraph A.
To the paragraph A. Paragraph A is what you have. Um, but if you're gonna have a waiver, you have to have criteria.
Yep.
Um, so this is adding that language at the front that says, here's the criteria, so it makes it clear that you have criteria, um, in which to, to review a waiver request.
So right now, wait, so, and the only waiver that there is, is just the elderly exemption?
Yep.
And that's what's defined in paragraph A?
Correct.
So you're saying the potential for something to... If any of the waiver requests, we would, we would never entertain any of the waiver requests that wasn't age-related?
Right.
Okay.
You don't have the authority.
According to this, yeah.
Right.
By adding this, it gives us a bit more, uh, leeway in what we can entertain for waiver requests. Which sounds good, but it also sounds like it could bring a flood of waiver requests. But it's up to us.
How do you, how do you define an unnecessary hardship?
Oh, there's a whole legal precedent basis for that, yeah.
I understand, I know that.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just worked with another town who had a whole, like, eight list of cry- eight things that somebody had to do to, to get a hardship waiver for a particular reason, I can't recall right now, um. I, I just thinks it makes it, I think it makes it messier to do that. That's my opinion. I, I agree that you, that you said it's gonna, a flood of requests would come in. Then you have to start to defend and define each section of, you know, for each request, et cetera, et cetera.
If you allow one, and they don't allow another one, then there's a precedence of you allowed one, which is a lawsuit, as to why.
I agree.
I've...
Alright, so, no waiver, no, uh, paragraph B. Um, that one I need to just check for, it's for maybe, um, ooh, you may be done.
Besides the one where he found it, is that common to have that in there? I'm just curious what other towns do? The waiver, what he, what he, Jason requested to put in there?
It's...
It's fifty-fifty, random?
Yeah. Some do, some don't. Um, that is, that is it, uh, I guess the one thing I guess I would flag is, um, go back to my little index. Let's see, and thirteen oh four, thirteen oh four, this is the piece that I reworked to take out the, um, process the later piece. So you got, sorry, it's, the heading starts on page six, and then the actual text goes on to page seven, for establishment review and change of, um, assessment schedules. Some of this is existing language, but what I did is I part, it was, I believe, in one paragraph originally, I parsed it out into sub-paragraphs, um, so that I could insert in just little bits here and there, that would just clarify that when it gets done, and how frequently, and what, what gets done, what gets looked at. Um, for example, paragraph B is where it talks about the, you know, the review may result in recommended adjustments, and one or more of the fees based on the most recent data as they affect the variables in the fee calculations. C, it's the same process that you had before, um. D is the same. I believe A is just slightly revised. That looks okay.
Yep.
Um, the only thing to do is go backwards to page three, really quick, just as a heads up. This is another piece that I reworked a little bit. And part of this is as a result of reorganizing some of the sections. Um, section thirteen oh two, point oh three, payment of fees. Um, part of this is language that was relocated from other sections. Um, originally, payment of fees only was what, there is the little item C, that they're due by, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And then I was, and this is one of those instances where I was getting comments, um, and I looked, I went, wait, this is already addressed in the ordinance. So what I did is I pulled A and B into this section, and this simply says, when an application comes into the planning board, you look at it, you review it, you say, here's what the impact fees are for this application. Um, and there, the amount that's owed is set, um, you essentially issue that applicant their bill. Uh, if there's no planning board approval, then Kevin does that same thing when he gets the building permit, looks at it, says, this is what you owe. It's not due, however, until C, they come in for their certificate of occupancy. Because you can't actually set that final amount due, because you, essentially, you need to know what the quantity is. You know what the rate is, you don't know what the quantity of square feet is, until you're, you're done, the, and you're coming in for that cer- certificate of occupancy, and all of those change orders have been processed and completed, um, and are set, um. And then D, I think you had somewhere else, um, actually, no, D might be new. Um, and this is simply saying that, you know, you could have come up with an alternate schedule based on, you know, you got your waivers, you've got your credits, you've got, you know, and then you can also come up with a schedule for when they do so. Um, so that, that was, uh, kind of a revised bit since we last looked at it.
That clarifies that the fee is set, for that operation, that plan is set, at the time of approval. Any years down the line, we just don't grab another fee, and we do this, something else, that's on the plan at the time set. Good, that'll erase the gray area.
Yeah, and it said, yeah. Uh, "And shall be stated in the board's notice of deci- decision, and as a note on the approved plat- or plan." That was actually existing language in the ordinance, but it was located elsewhere, um, in the ordinance, so it was kind of buried and lost. So pulling it in with the payment of fees makes it, look here, step one, two, three, done.
Process of once the building comes in with a commercial, but I calculate out what the impact fee would be at the time of the issue of the plant. This way they know upfront what it's gonna be, the time of the CO, that day, I get it paid, okay? Now, if this subdivision goes on to three years, four years, and we rearrange the fees a little bit, that's nice, that's only for those new subdivisions.
Right.
Create this one stay. I don't, I don't wanna get into, well, this law's been sent here for ten years, if you submit to that fee, that was ten years ago, that's it, clean. And that's what, that's simple. You're not pro-rating something.
Right, and this is, this is not a change from current practice. Um, this is how applicants are, are in the process that's applied currently. Um, and has been since approximately two thousand, two thousand and one, um, when it was revised, um...
So you're just defining it?
We're just pulling it all together in one place here, um, because those who were reading the ordinance weren't necessarily finding and connecting those pieces, um.
Okay.
That's what, that's the disconnect that went on, so, the guy in the road, impact fee, which is such a matter by itself, but there's two or three of them. And when you start going through the accounting process of it, it's horrendous, you know? Damn, I didn't kill that one. Oops.
So that is all I had.
So we're just defragmenting the, the language.
That's fine. Good. Good.
All right, so what I'm gonna do now is I'll make this last round of revisions.
Hi, guys.
And then I'll, as we said before, I'll send it off to, uh, the different folks for their, their comments. Um, and I do have, you know, the specific questions flagged for Mr. Mayberry, Jason. Anyone else you wanted me to send it to for comments?
Is it premature to send it to council?
We could.
I don't want to waste their time or waste our money. If it seems premature, if we're gonna put more edits in based on what we hear back from.
I figure you probably wait till the next round.
Maybe wait till the next round? All right.
Nice job pulling all that together. Following it all.
Got a little cross-eyed.
Maybe doing your phone, did you?
If you, no, if you want to frighten yourself, though, this one, reorganized version as track changes, um, is quite colorful. It was a little too much. It's not horrendous. I mean, the, the nice thing that Word does for you is when you tell it to, to go ahead and review and see, you know, what's changed, what hasn't from the original, it actually does identify the pieces that are just purely moved a hundred percent intact and it shows those as green instead of the red. Um, so, any of that, the green strikers and underlines is simply picked up and moved as opposed to anything else. But if you make an edit to any of that language, even if you change one word, it's red. You lose that wholesale move markup style.
Is there anything else you want to go over specifically? I know the methodology document from Mr. Mayberry was new from last time. Is that new?
No.
That was your last time?
No. When I follow up.
There's nothing else that you put in here that's new besides what was on the ordinance section? Okay.
Yeah, but when I follow up, I can ask him statuses on the methodology updates. So I do have a few questions for him on kind of lining up our work with his.
Is there anything else you want to go over on the ordinance? Or you're done? Okay.
Um, no, I just figured at this point, just to do that high-level kind of last-minute remaining questions, and get that review and come back. Because the rest of it, um, you reviewed rather thoroughly and the amendments I made, they were, I mean, the feedback was pretty straightforward, um, so there was less getting creative in the other sections. So it should reflect what you requested.
Is it realistic to have this back by the twentieth? Or is this like a month from now, next month to revisit?
I don't know, depends on how long they take. Yeah, I'm, the changes here will only take me a few minutes to make, so I can get those done and out pretty soon.
Okay. So maybe have this on the next agenda, just in case we receive it back? Next item on the agenda is to approve the April fifteen minutes. Everyone had a chance to review them? Short and choo- short and sweet.
I saw nothing that, that popped out to me.
Just wanted to make a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes of the April fifteenth, that two thousand fourteen meeting?
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
I agree.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Uh, passes five zero one. And any other business? We just want to look at the calendar for the summer months?
Yeah, I have one thing to bring up.
Okay.
Uh, I'll say this, um, under state law, the planning board is the approving facility for all excavations in town and what have you. And I don't think that the excavations that have been approved have been looked at for many, many, many years, and I'm saying four, five-plus years.
Okay.
Now, each of those excavations should have in the files, and Joan can talk whether she has those or not, I don't know. Should have in the files their, um, list of what they're gonna excavate, how they're gonna excavate, the scope and extent of their excavation, how they're gonna recover it, and they should also have how they're bonding that so that if they were to go bankrupt, as an example, that the town would be able to pull the bond and have sufficient monies to be able to recover the land and bring it back to its condition of, a suitable condition, I'll call it. I would strongly encourage the planning board at some point to pull those documents, review them, and then consider arranging field trips, if you want to call it that, with the developers or the owners of the excavation to review their application to the planning board, which was approved at some point in the past, with what's actually in the field. So that you don't have a situation where the developer's now gone and done something that you've got no data on, the town's no longer covered with the bonds, if there are any still in extent or whatever, that type of thing. So, just to give you my four cents worth of thought.
Would Mr. Lynch ever go to these, 'cause technically you're not building anything, it's excavating, so.
I don't think Kevin would be going.
To these at all, okay, so no one's visiting from the town?
Yeah, and that's why, it, it's the planning board's authority to, to manage these under the excavation ordinance, which council will now advise us.
We have plenary power.
I thought last year I'd sent Kevin out on a...
Do we?
We went, went a couple of, maybe two or three years ago, he and I toured, um, um, Continental Slant, Luttrell Sand and Gravel, but, you know, we weren't comparing it to a plan or anything.
Does Lou go?
Lou should be going.
Lou should be.
Okay.
Yeah, but Lou, Lou, Lou can do it, but you've got to figure out then how Lou's charges get mounted, melted back into the town's budgets and stuff.
Right.
Um, and it's also a good exercise so that the planning board knows exactly what's in those plans.
Yep.
You know, um, and understands what these guys are supposed to be doing and how the town should be protected. Because if these guys do go bankrupt and there is no bond, or there's an inadequate bond, or they've done something, then you're in a situation where, right now, the land's gonna sit there looking like an excavation pit.
Yep.
You're not gonna be able to spread loam, plant trees, do whatever you gotta do on it.
And without active excavation taking place, erosion would begin to occur and...
There may also be cases where excavations have ceased. I don't know. And what's happened is those excavations should be closed and the land recovered, and that may not be happening. I, I don't know, I'm not saying it is, I just don't know.
But if there's still a bond on it?
There may be a bond on it.
If a bond expired, wouldn't we, when the town known the bond exp- or there's a date on the bond for expiration, correct?
There should be.
Can we get a list of those for the?
Yeah, I have, um, them on the excavation bonds, I'll pull all that and see what's active and what's not.
Okay.
Those excavations time-bound? And I like they're granted to do it for X number of years or two months?
In the case of at least one I know, there was a time on it. And the time was in actually a hundred-plus years.
Yeah.
Hundred-plus years?
It's a quar- more like a quarry, it is a quarry.
It is a quarry, that, that was Chabano's. And, um, but I mean, there's other ones that are, you know, probably not as long in duration, some of which may not even have time on them. The other thing that you may need, you may be faced with is the need to have their permits or their documents to the planning board updated. For example, if these guys, um, came to the town for excavations prior to some of the new laws the state has enacted on excavations being put in place, their, I'll call it, permit package may not be up to stuff anymore. And you may want to consider whether you want them to, to update that or not, I don't know. And I don't know if that's legal either, I mean, if, if you can request them to update their packages compared to the new ordinances, you, um, not ordinances, but new laws, you may be able to.
I know DRA has changed a number of years ago the way they taxed excavation, so there should be a list out there of, that DRA has as well.
I don't know, does DR, you wouldn't know about DRA?
Sometimes, depending on what the data product is.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's a massive list of excavation somewhere in the state. DES, is DES that one or?
Aren't they required to file annual or renew permits annually and state how much of whatever they're taking out of the ground is being taken out?
There, there is an excavation tax. So they state annually how much they're planning on taking out and then at the end they, they, they true it up in terms of the tax, so the town gets tax monies or revenues on that. Separate issue than the, uh, and that's maybe one thing you want to take and pull the records on in the town, in the selectmen's offices, who's paying taxes? Compare that to who you've got, I'll call it, issued permits on it, I, I don't know.
Mix it and match.
Yeah.
Yeah, really?
How many excavation, uh, just like, must be just a handful, right, sites?
Yeah, well, there's a lot that ha- are not active and, um, there should be some restoration bonds out there and there's quite a few old one, well, a few old ones, not. And one that's, of course, active.
All right, this is definitely something we should, uh, put in agenda for next time and have more information on it to start addressing it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, for any other business regarding, um, meetings for the summer? Officially gonna be meeting one, meeting a month during the summer. We'll be canceling, uh, the Tuesday, June seventeenth meeting, Tuesday, July first, and Tuesday, August nineteenth.
Wait a second, July first is a Thursday.
That's a Thursday?
July sixth is the, um, Tuesday.
Ah, good, July first. Am I wrong?
July first is a Thursday.
So you're gonna cancel which, which meetings?
July first is a Tuesday.
No, I'm her calendar.
You have the wrong year, what year is that?
Two thousand fourteen?
Uh-oh.
Look at your June before that, though. Check June, see what day that ends on.
The day is a Tuesday, July first.
June third is a Tuesday.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth is a Monday.
Yeah.
Are you using a calendar?
My calendar's broken. Oh, no.
Just thought I'd ask.
So as long as those are all Tuesdays, we'll be doing, uh, June seventeenth, July first, and August nineteenth. Having the alternate Tuesdays as the meetings for the month.
All right, so July first is off, please. Let me get rid of this calendar.
So which ones is?
Uh, June seventeenth.
Okay.
July first.
First, yep.
And August nineteenth.
Those are the canceled.
Cancelled ones, yep. So we'll have June third, the fifteenth of July, and the fourth of August. Fifth of August. Do we have to post anything officially anywhere for those changes? Or is this official enough? Does it have to be on the website or?
Um, it's on the website of the rolling dates, so I'll just tell Jason that these are.
Those three dates will be canceled, okay. Anything else someone wants to bring up for the meeting? Can we just not take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Passes, uh, six zero zero. All right, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, May twentieth, at seven P M. Have a good evening.